You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Swansea.
Recording in progress.
All right, well, open the meeting. September 27th. Brickham Hall, 17 Main Street.
Do I say the town zip code? Make a motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of September 13th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 13th. Any additions, deletions, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes one and two of September 13th.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded to approve the non-public meeting minutes, one and two of September 13th. Any additions, deletions, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion, we approve the special meeting minutes of September 18th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the special meeting minutes of September 18th. Any additions, deletions, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye, make the motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes of September 18th.
That's a time course, isn't it?
It was for me.
Yeah.
On a day.
Uh...
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the non-public meeting minutes of September 18th. Any additions, deletions, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Any additions? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Second. Any additions, deletions?
No, sir.
And Joe's okay with the MO? You?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public input. All right. Kathy Yaron, Mount Caesar Union Library trustee.
Do I need to stand up?
Aye. Able to get good audio on her from there, or, yeah, okay?
Um, I'm here as the town elected trustee to the Mount Caesar Union Library. And I wanted to just give you a status report of what's going on. I wanted to thank you all and everybody who's watching for giving us the additional funds last election time for us to increase our youth librarians' hours by six hours. It has...
Seventeen hours.
Oh, seventeen hours, sorry. It has made such a significant difference you cannot imagine. I mean, build it and they will come. We have partnered with Beyond the Bell at the school district, and we have had so many children you can't imagine. At our summer reading program, we averaged about ninety every session that we had with them, and then they came over separately from their meetings. And over half of them took out new library carts and come for reading hours. And Andrea, who is our youth librarian, has now established two different youth book clubs, the Tweens and the Biggers. And she's established writing clubs, story hours. She's just done incredible. In fact, she doesn't even have enough hours for everything that she's doing with the young people. The demands are so great. So this year, I know that we will ask to try and increase her hours again because it's been so successful. She's been working at home as well as at the library, trying to just keep up with everything. And we, as we know, we have not been able to use our second story because we were told that the floors were structurally not safe and that we shouldn't have more than fifteen people at a time on our second floor. And winter coming on, we just felt that we had to start our renovations now so that we could by spring have, start youth programs upstairs. Right now, the other libraries around are working with us as our people in their homes, working for our groups and things like this. So, um, we figure safety is what it's all about for us. And we're concerned about both our staff and patrons that come to the library. And while we did not have all the funds necessary from our capital campaign to do this renovation, we felt we couldn't wait any longer. So we ventured forward in faith. We put in an all-out effort to raise the funds. The fund, the bid came in from Ingram, fifty thousand more than we thought it was going to be. When they gave us the final, can't go past this price. That price is three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And so we are replacing, we are reinforcing the first floor and the second floor, and we're having to replace the HVAC system. Our HVAC went out last year in the wintertime. As luck would have it, Katie Cassidy, our Southernland architect, had just helped somebody put in a new HVAC system, and they had an old boiler that was still halfway working. So as a temporary measure, it was volunteered to be put into our place, which got us through the winter up to this point. So we are, we now need a complete system, which is what we're putting in. And while the floors are opened up, we're changing the wiring because the wiring is quite antiquated. So really, when all this is over, nobody's going to see great differences, except it's going to be safe for everybody. You're going to walk in and it's going to look almost the same. I mean, it will be painted, there will be new carpeting, but it will look almost the same. We have reached out to everybody we can possibly reach out to, trying to get further grants, et cetera. We still are about fifty thousand short. I had hoped that we could ask the town for a hundred thousand. We know that you have fifty-two thousand set aside for us already in the capital expense fund, whatever you call that fund. But I was hoping that we could go to a hundred thousand this year to meet that shortfall. And so this is what I have to say. It's all about our community, the safety in the community. We don't want to be in the national news by our second floor collapsing with sixty children upstairs watching a movie or the youth, the activities that the mothers and the kids do jumping around up there. We can't take that chance. So we need, this is a very vital part of our community, and this is what we're all about. We're here not looking for any extras, except we are looking for a little extra money to get us through this. So that's where we are with the Mount Caesar Union Library. Any questions? Anybody want to write a sub check?
Seen the pictures.
Pardon?
Seen the pictures on Facebook.
And the good news is, here's the, here's the really good news. We did not know if it being an old historic building, eighteen forty-three, when you open this up, what is going to happen? Are you going to find all sorts of things that have to be done? Fortunately, we have not found anything that's a surprise. There wasn't any issues with termites or rodents or anything like this. They're putting in a vapor barrier when they, on the ground, when they put this in, which will help keep down some of the mice that haven't done any damage, significant damage, other than they've left their trail everywhere. So, um, we're moving forward. We meet every week with the contractors, and we thank you for the use of the conference room at Town Hall for doing that because we are meeting every week with them. And there is, they tell us that we're going to be finished by January 8th. They're going to send us little bills every month, progress payments along the way. And we're prepared to meet some of them, but the final one, we're not going to be able to meet without some additional help. So we really need all the support that we can get from you all.
So, a little confused. My, my understanding coming in was that we were being asked to allocate fifty-one thousand and change out of the expendable fund. So where would we get the other fifty thousand?
Ooh, this is where we're hoping you guys can find it for us.
We run a pretty tight budget.
Should we go to the committee that draws out the budget?
You're talking about CIPC? That's, that's future looking. So they would be allocating funds, recommending allocation of funds.
We know that you have forty-five set aside for us for next year in that budget, but, but we also know that that's not approved until the warrant article is approved in March. So if there was any way of advancing on that for the January payment would be most helpful.
Well, we'll have to look to our financial guru to our left and...
I buy lot of tickets, I'm doing everything I can.
Michael would be the one to be able to answer. A, I don't think we can do what you're asking with regard to the forty-five thousand, but in terms of whether we have fifty thousand hours available.
Well, you already have set aside in that fund fifty-two thousand for us.
That's what we...
What's already been in the past, it doesn't have to be approved, that's already there, that should be able to be drawn on.
Well, we, that's what I was saying. So we, we understand that the expectation is that that fund will be drawn down to zero, but it still leaves a fifty thousand dollar gap in what you're asking. So be reliant on Michael to try to figure that out. But the forty-five thousand, we don't have the funds, I don't believe we do, to advance. We don't have the right to do it. But it would be potentially in next year's budget, and, and it could actually be increased if you pursue that approach with CIPC.
Should we meet with them?
I think you're on the list, aren't you?
Yeah, you will be, but again, that's for future, that would be for, you know, whether it's forty-five or some other number for next year, but I don't think that solves your immediate issue. And I, I told easily he's the same thing. I met with them previously, suggested they come in, A, for the update, but B, you know, ask about expending the known funds and just making a request. I told her the same, I told him the same thing, that I didn't know of any source. So I think they, they know it's a little bit of a long shot, but, um, so that's for context. I, I don't know of another source.
I mean, we're still going to keep banging on everybody's door.
Yeah.
We're not giving up. We're, you know, we've got the National Day of Giving coming up in November also. But we, I mean, just today, I'm applying for another one, she's working on another. We're, we're going to every direction we can, trying to come up with these funds.
Well, we have the flexibility to allocate the fifty-one and change.
Yeah. I think it's fifty-two.
It's like fifty, fifty-one, eighty.
Fifty-one, eight seventy-two, eighty-one.
I think I got rounded off. No, I think I got rounded off.
So anyway, we could do the fifty-one, eight, which would be...
We'll take it, we'll take it.
That's the extent of what we have.
You want to make that motion, Joe?
I'd, I'd happen to make that motion.
Yeah, I'll need cash.
I think so.
You'll have to wait for the bank bill. I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Mount Caesar Union Library Expendables Trustee.
What was the total about?
Fifty-one thousand, eight hundred.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, you're looking for the seventy-two, eighty-one for your project? Almighty, just a few dollars more than that.
No, if anybody wants to just kick in and round it off, we accept. It's tax deductible.
We don't want to all do it right now.
I can't really have.
Senator in New Jersey with a golden bar, then he might be wanting to put a four or five.
We're, we're reaching every direction we can. Everybody's got a book in our library, we're reaching out to them.
Sure. But you've done a phenomenal job so far.
You never know, you never know.
You've certainly uncovered a few things from those pictures. Were you able to save the flooring?
Well, we're, it's, it's, it's a little bit of an issue. Mike said that maybe they could store it for us, and it might go up for bid here. There are two people in the town that have expressed an interest in getting the flooring. We expect that we might be able to get...
Forty-nine thousand?
We wish. No, we may only need forty-eight thousand or better, but, uh... But some of it was salvageable. And they're just trying to get the nails out of it now because somebody wants nails out of it, but wants it. Even other really nice old nails.
We're going to save the nails, we're going to go with the wood, but it's going to stack a lot easier on the trailer. I'd offer to just help them tell Wilson nails, get it on the trailer, get it, get a bid going, and then Heiser gets it within twenty-five miles of the delivery and make them come across.
How many, plenty of feet do you think we have?
I don't know, I think we've begun to try, probably just do it as, I'll probably do it as a, as a board foot thing, and it's still going to be a bit of a...
I think he said about four hundred square feet.
So we're in a neighborhood, yeah, so...
Yeah.
But in either words, I mean, everybody wants them because, you know, we get an eighty-year ability, except for one hundred and eighty-year ability.
And it wears well.
It wears well, so...
Better than the new, the new pine?
It costs, it would cost us more to refinish them and put them down. We're covering it with carpet instead of doing really nice floors. Libraries need to be quiet, so we don't need top-of-the-line quality flooring. We just need, say, sturdy flooring.
Yep. Non-squeak.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Any reason why you can't get Mark to carry up here?
Nope, I don't think so, perfect timing.
Okay. Mark, Jay?
Jim?
The same thing as last time.
We have one in our packet.
You do? Thank you guys for continuing us here. This time we'll get into a little bit more detail. So you have is a list of items in your packet or in front of you. Really not in any particular order, we're trying to kind of keep this flowing. So we're going to start with water quality at Wilson Pine. And Jake, you know, Mike, you've given an overview of the...
So first off, I want to say we're, we're not here to ask for money. Not that, not that we should have money for the library and that stuff, I'm just saying, we're not here to ask for money. So we've been testing the water this summer, as we do every summer. You folks have been paying for it, which is great, for paying for the testing. And I just wanted to let you know that we're doing pretty well from Wilson Pine. There are just a couple areas of concern that are starting to crop up. The pH is satisfactory, but it's close to a problem in some areas, especially in the deep spot where it's, and the lake is moderately vulnerable, the pH changes. It's hard to change the pH of a body of water. I mean, you have to, a body is large at Wilson Pine, you have to do quite a bit to lower the pH, even a tenth of, a tenth of a, of a unit. So it's not really a serious concern, it's just that it is getting down there to where anything below six point five, the fish have, have more difficulty living. And the deep spot is at six point four-five, six point four-four. So the other parts of the lake are six point six, six point seven, we even have some areas that are seven, which are all okay, but it's just an area that we need to keep monitoring, looking at. The other areas that we're, it turns out that the phosphorus, which we are really concerned about, is about average. So it's not a terrible concern at this point. Where we're seeing some issues is in the conductivity. Now, I think I can beat you something from the, about conductivity just because there's you and me, so I'm sure maybe you do too. Conductivity is an numerical expression of the ability of water to carry an electric current. It is determined by the number of ionic particles present. Soft waters in New Hampshire traditionally handle low conductivity values. High conductivity may indicate pollution from some sources as road salting, septic systems, wastewater treatment plants, or agricultural runoff. Now, we don't have septic system problems on Wilson Pine or wastewater treatment plants or agricultural runoff. So this would indicate that road salt, road salting is the main contributor to maintaining high conductivity. Specific categories of good and bad levels cannot be constructed for conductivity because variations in watershed geology can result in natural fluctuations in conductivity. However, values in New Hampshire lakes exceeding a hundred, whatever the unit is, generally indicate human disturbance. So we have several areas that we test that have conductivity values over a hundred. All right? This is an indication to us that the lake is being impacted a little bit by road salting in the roads surrounding the lake. In addition to that, we have the chloride content, which is usually less than two in New Hampshire lakes as the unit, two milligrams per liter. We average over twenty, which indicates, in my reading of the parameters here, that there's road salt infiltrating into the pond. And some areas are bigger than others and so on. But it's not a serious problem. New Hampshire's limit for a chronic problem is two hundred and thirty, and we're averaging around twenty. So once again, it's just indication, I mean, you need to be careful about the road salting around the area. I know this issue's been brought up before, and I sent a link to Michael and Joe Negrusso about a conference on different products to use for road salting in the area, and Joe thanked me for the link, I don't know if you went or really learned from it. But there are other things to use in standard road salt. And what we're suggesting is perhaps we should think about using different products in the roads on the periphery of Wilson Pine. Wilson Pine Road, uh, the Waters Edge Road, and they'd be around the ten and the twelve where very, where there impacts to the, uh... I don't know how difficult that is, I don't think it's much more expensive, but it's something that would be more of an issue for the roads department to do.
So that's... Have you, have you been to DOT? Unless I'm mistaken, we take care of thirty-two.
Yeah. Now, we haven't, we haven't gone to, to the state in any way. If that's what you're talking about.
Just curious.
I'm just, I'm just bringing that up as a...
Because we only have limited...
We may continue to pursue this as much as we can, Bill, but we want the town to know that this is an informal session. We want you to know what is our concern about. And we know that residents from the pond have talked to Joe before about the, the road salting on Waters Edge and Wilson Pine Road, and he's been reluctant to engage in different. So that's what we know. And we'll continue to push, and we just want to raise that as a, as a concern for the water quality on the pond right now.
To know what the pH levels, what, what is the concern with that?
Well, if the pH drops too low, then we have problems with the fish surviving in the water. It, as I said, it's not terrible right now. It's getting to that area at the deep, where we measured the deep portion of the lake, the pH there. That could be simply, uh, this summer, it was very close to the cutoff point. They said six point four-five versus six point five. Higher pH is good, the lower pH is bad. So six point four-five is, is too low for the six point five cutoff, it's more acidic than it should be. But it doesn't mean that fish are dying in Wilson Pine because of it. It simply means that there's, it's getting close to a level where we may have to be concerned. So at this point, I don't think any of us are really concerned about the pH level. We just want to keep monitoring it, and it's one of the reasons we do the, the lake testing.
So is this year a benchmark year?
Well, I, well, you have last year's data as well. We were testing in the same areas pretty much. And the, they're similar. The, the numbers I've seen are similar this year than last. It's the first year that I've been fully involved in it, so I'm not certain how much I should prepare last year and this year, so we won't use this year as a benchmark. And we are starting to test, we mentioned at the last meeting, we did test at the culvert coming in from Route Twelve to see if we can prepare that next summer, what we're seeing as the construction on Wilson Pine and have started, and see if there's any issues that can crop up there. So we have a baseline for the year.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, but just one additional point, only because we talked about, you know, the fish, fish being harmed. So early in the season, we did have a bacterial bloom, it was not cyanobacteria, bacteria, fungi. And, you know, one of the signs of that was fish dying. So it was probably a two, three week period where we probably, personally, I probably saw twenty fish come up on my shoreline in that show period, and I maybe I see five per year coming one year. So that was a sign that, you know, it's just, we're just heaving, we're can't, right?
Well, when I talked to the biologist about this, it was a little bit encouraging because she said that certain species of fish are highly susceptible to temperature in the breeding season. And this was around the breeding season for the fish, and it was very warm, if you remember, in June and so on. And she believed that a lot of this was certain species, because it was mostly one species that were, were in the breeding cycle, and they were very sensitive to the high temperature of the water, and therefore that's a seasonal thing or a, once, once in a while it happens. Like, it's not a serious problem long-term in the lake. But it was, residents around the pond got very concerned about this and thought that we had a real problem in the, in the lake. And I had ten, fifteen fish on my shoreline, my small shoreline, it was about as long as that table. So, yeah.
But it's yours.
But all in all, you know, the water seems to be fine, it's been beautiful once the weather's changed and all that, so... Another concern is vegetation. So we have both shoreline vegetation, things like cattails and other things that seem to be proliferating, as well as aquatic vegetation that just kind of starts following our pathways with our boats and stuff. So, you know, we're concerned about that. That seemed to really have taken off, you know, I have to put a stamp on it. I think it was the drawdown in twenty nineteen, which had been during some warming months when they did the dam repair. I think that just kind of did something to the vegetation, where you either root it deeper or spread more in order to survive. I'm just speculating. But it seems like from that, from that point on, every year, it's getting worse and worse and worse. So part of what we're doing is the Lakesmart program that you asked about last time we're here. So let me just read this, and I'll give this to you. Lakesmart is a free, non-regulatory, involuntary education and recognition program. The goal is to encourage property owners to maintain their homes and properties in ways that protect lake water quality, wildlife habitat, and property values. So it's, it's a non-binding program, it's totally, you know, elective. I kind of jumped and took the lead, and actually had my property already reviewed, and I got my Lake Fendy living report and some things that I agreed to do on my property to, you know, help with ride walk and things like that. The, the official New Hampshire Lake Committee is no longer doing inspections this year with one exception that I managed to negotiate. So as of today, we have eleven additional properties that will get inspected on October 12th of New Hampshire lakes. And the phthalates got a lot of sitting here, it's probably itself, and that's our limit. So, um, so we're able to, when they're, at my property, negotiate this to really get a jump start, right? So next spring, hopefully, we'll have, you know, many more of these properties inspected. It's, it's encouraging, you know, when people, you know, get, take initiatives and willing to, you know, have somebody kind of look at their property and make recommendations to me. I think that kind of tells us about our community and the, the character of the pond that everybody wishes to maintain. We also recognize that the lakes... We also recognize that the Lakesmart program itself really will help to better position us for an order management program and associated grant down the road. So that's part of what, what we're doing, why we're doing this. So I don't know too all the details, but I, it's my understanding from the Swansea Lake Preservation Association, the people I know and communicate with there, that the town is somewhat involved in, in their program and getting a grant for that. And we would just hope to do the same probably within the next year or two. We're, we're going to try to accelerate it as much as possible, but that's, that's our thinking, so. The water level on Wilson Pond, so the dam is, you know, managed by, I guess, we can just say Joe DeRosa, and whoever does it. And, you know, Joe and I, we, we converse back and forth quite a bit. So just where we're at now is, we're at five and a half boards, okay? Over the couple of years that I've been doing this, we found that six boards, in my opinion, were too high when we got significant amount of ring in properties, you know, with flash quicker. Five boards is too low. You know, a couple of properties on the lake, when the water's too low, they can't navigate their boats out of their docks. It's just too shallow for them, right? And, you know, people have built their docks and, and purchased their boats based on historic levels. So we, you know, we need to maintain those historic levels as much as we can. So probably have boards, and some that I recommended to Joe, and we actually did it this year, it's wonderful. It's been, it's been great. It gives us that, three inches gives us that much more of a buffer for those heavy rains, and, you know, it's just, it's been working real well in my thinking, okay? We did weather all that rain we got early in the season and the big catastrophic rain event, which six boards it, okay? And we, we were fine, okay? Yes, our water was high. The, one board was finally removed, two days after that catastrophic, catastrophic event, which is probably a perfect time, so I commend Joe on that. Because, you know, the underbrook dam was releasing full amounts of water. I get on the Army Corps of Engineers site, I can see that, as anybody else can. So it worked out well. I wasn't happy when a second board was removed, because it became a struggle to get the water back up, okay? So it's, we, we just have to be sensitive that we're trying to maintain the water at, you know, a reasonable level for people to, you know, recreate and navigate their boats to and out. The point I'd make is, I have not got a single complaint about high water level this year. I did get complaints about it too, though, which you wouldn't think this would be the case, really, that would be the case. But, yeah. Look, when it rains a lot, people expect it to be up, so. So I just wanted to kind of mention that and make that point. Upper Wilson Pond dam construction, Mike, you've heard of my exposition on this, you know? People are concerned about what might get released from that dam. We really fully believe it's pretty contaminated behind it. Also, the construction debris itself, right? With, you know, what they're going to be doing and what might flow into, into Wilson Pond. So all I can ask is that you guys do your best to mitigate anything, or, you know, force the contractor to, you know, do as much as possible. Also, the timing, you know, is a concern, right? It's probably a multi-month project, three, four months, I'm not even sure.
Yeah, that's a fair estimate.
Yeah. So, you know, from May to October is when we use the, the water, so that would be our concerns. So my statement should have no impact on our water level. It's just going to wrap the water around you, and the flow, whatever the flow is, will continue, so.
Just want to mention that some of the concerns from people on pond are that, coming from the fact they don't really understand what's going on in the project. And one of the things that might help is, once the contractor has developed the plans and is all set to go, there'd be some sort of public information needed where people could be invited to ask questions and figure it out. Because I, I think we've been told, I, I understand the plans are there to maintain the flow exactly as it is right now. The water's going to go around the dam and, and, and around the construction and come on down. The only concern is what's in that water, in terms of what it brings down to the water pond. But other people don't quite have that understanding of the project, and it might be nice, in terms of public relations, for there to be some sort of forum where they can go and ask questions. Not you guys, one of us would...
Sure. And we have means of communicating to a large group of people, so, you know, even if it's not a two-way street, we kind of, you know, keep people informed, right? So would be really ideal, if you have the existing dam there now, if a new dam could be built literally right in front of it, that would be wonderful. So I don't know what the techniques are and all that, but that's what my thinking is, so. Off-schedule water testing, so while Swansea Lake was shut down, people were curious, they were calling Midtown to see if Swansea Lake is safe for swimming. We, we don't know, okay? The water testing that we do, once a month, during the warming months, it's, it's not going to tell us whether it's safe for swimming, right? Eukaliid might be, might exist there and might not exist there, right?
I can tell you it was safe, it was safe on September eleventh.
So I think the best, best line to give to anybody who is calling to say, is Wilson Pond safe for swimming, is Wilson Pond does not have a public beach. It's probably the best answer you can give, unless, unless you're going to test there. So that's, that's my, that's, that would be what I would suggest, right?
Our understanding is that the town doesn't want to call it a beach, because if you call it a beach, then we're encouraged swimming, we might have to write a letter. So it's not a beach, it's a boat launch. But town documents refer to it as a beach, Master Plan does, a couple other things. And we've got to be careful about that, because we don't want to call it a beach, because then the town's so liable for that. So if people want, it says, there's a sign here that says, no swimming. A lot of other knows that people violate the town. So we, we don't, we don't want to get into a position where we have to supervise that. We certainly don't want to, and I don't think the town that we wants to supervise a boat launch. So it's a, it's a potential authority issue when people are, are asking if the water is clean to swim in, because once you try to determine whether it's clean to swim in, then you become liable for whether it is clean to swim in. So just putting all that to the table, I don't, I don't think anyone wants to really get into testing every day to prove that that is, that it's safe, especially since we're not trying to encourage swimming.
I mean, look, people need to recreate, you know, we're indifferent, it's tolerated. But somebody has to, you know, decide what's the cutoff, right? What's tolerated there? So that kind of takes me into the ninth item I have on there, which is the shoreline erosion at the boat launch, okay? Somebody said to me that, you know, that shoreline's eroding because the water's high. It's not eroding because the water's high. It's eroding because we have a lot of people going up and down those banks swimming, right? There's some places where it's really carved out. So what I would recommend here, and just from my thinking, is put some, some good-sized rocks along that shoreline to keep it from eroding, to keep people from going up and down, at least in that area. You know, ten, twelve-inch boulders, and just stack them up like a lot of people do on their property to prevent the erosion, right? And then backfill those areas that are very severe. That would be one solution that I would, I would think would, would work, right? That's just me, I never like to present a problem without, at least having some idea what a solution might be for it, so. But that's something that maybe the town should consider. Some of it is getting pretty close to that carriageway that's there, so. I'm a little dry. Great, you want to talk about some of the cleanup?
And so we, just so you know, we have a, a program where we, we ask residents to volunteer to pick up the boat launch area once a week on Sundays. On Sundays, people sign up for a slot during the summer months to go down there and pick up the boat launch. And we've worked out a nice system, and we've got, we've got the blue bags, and we put the trash in that, and Joe's supposed to pick them up, and he usually does, on Monday. And that, and it's been working wonderfully well. And that, and most of the time, when we go down there to pick up, there's not a whole bunch of stuff, because we've been picking it up every week. And it encourages people to pick up after themselves, because they don't see a trash beach, a trash boat launch area, and so they don't have a, it sticks out if they drop something. One Sunday, I picked up three dirty diapers, but, you know, other than that, mostly trash has been under, under control.
The safer, not safest swimming, just their type of area?
Yeah, yeah. Left on the shore. But, but I guess that's, it, we would just want to tell you that, that program is working very well, and it's one of the, we, we was an association, so organized that cleanup. And it's just, it's not only us, we, we were, we had some concerns about some trash that was on the edge of the Nanate property on the, on the, the, I forget what it is now, but...
Page court.
Page court. And my wife called Nanatech and explained to them what was going on, and the problem has disappeared. It was a bunch of, I believe, underage drinkers going down that, in the page court and drinking their, you know, you'd go by, and after a weekend, there'd be twenty plus other cans. They're, they're not there anymore, and they're picked up, and Nanatech is going to take good care of the property, as well as our folks there. We also have some residents who do some of their own cleanup. One of the residents mows the area between the road and Wilson Pond, north of the dam up to his property. He also picks up the trash there, too. So we're, we want to just let you know about this, and we're taking responsibility for the overall appearance of, of the public areas.
Also, Nanatech actually cleans around the pond, I would think, at least once a year, possibly twice a year. Might see, you know, several groups of people out there, bags, picking stuff up. I've seen them go down Lake Street. I pulled in my driver one day, I said, you know, can, can I ask what you're doing? And they go, I was like, happy, right? Because you, you can only imagine, it's thrown against the fence, you know, right? So, yeah, you know, just had a nice conversation with, I think with the owner, who I was speaking with, so. They're, they're very, very appreciative of things. We do a lot of spring cleaning as well, and I go out by kayak and, you know, I clean all through that whole back area. And typically, I get two good-sized bags of garbage out, and that's why I have to get them out historically during spring, right? This year, there was only one. And I think the reason for that is that the fish, ice fishing derby was canceled. I'm thinking people are throwing their garbage into those holes, as they're drinking their bugs and doing whatever they're doing, but I had one bag left this year. I'll look at you next year, okay? So the last thing on there is Mananak choppers. And Mike, I appreciate the fact that you brought that up to David at the end of this lightning meeting, I wasn't here.
You had escaped, but we had the opportunity of his presence, so...
I did, and I used that opportunity to put a call into him, and I did receive a call back, so.
Good.
You know, part of the issue was that people feel like they were not getting the call back, right? So David and I had a, a nice conversation. We had to share each other's contact information. He understood the problem. It's not military helicopters, believe me, we know the difference between the sound and the routines. And he said that he would, you know, reach out to Kevin and, you know, deal with it. Kevin's not there that frequently anymore. He took a position somewhere else, so he has other pilots. So David thought maybe the war just didn't get down...
Yeah, you mentioned he thought some of them might have been a new trainer or something.
So you, you created an opportunity, and I took it. So hopefully that's where we're on the bridge.
For what it's worth, the other day, I saw a helicopter doing its thing on the other side of the runway from Wilson Pond.
So, thank you. So this is just our, I don't know, I thought this would be a good thing to do, I didn't think it would take this long. But then we do it at least once a year, just to kind of update you guys on what we're thinking, what we say, where the expenses are. And just want Wilson Pond always to be fresh in your mind, so.
Would you be willing to follow up with regard to the vegetation and the review that the group is doing on the twelfth, to create some understanding as to how that could be better controlled?
Yeah, that, that's more about the runoff into the pond, be October twelfth, that's, that's...
That's about individual properties and controlling the water, the one runs into the pond from, from the property, so. You know, people planting vegetation rather than having open grass by the bank, things like that, putting ways to mitigate stormwater runoff from the streets, things like that. But, but we can ask the question of the biologists when they're here about what they think we should be doing about the vegetation. We've, we've been asking those questions every chance we get, and we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, I think next year, we are on, it's a two-year cycle, so I think next year, we will have a biologist come out during the summer. And we've said our plan also, so it should be out, at least for one of our water testing. So time is actually pretty, pretty good, so, yeah, yeah.
The biologist couple once a year knows things that we don't do, like dissolved oxygen tests and so on. We, you know, Swansea Lake on its dissolved oxygen, we do it more often than we do just once a year.
Well, we used to, I lived in the Berkshires, and there's a lake there that was, it's fine as any lake we have in New Hampshire in terms of property values and all that. And now it's all milfoil. And they actually harvest the milfoil on a, on a bi-weekly, or, I'm sorry, twice a week. They, they have a, whatever they call it, a thresher or something that comes through. So that's why I'm just curious. I know it's not milfoil, but, but the cattails before they get out of control.
It's the pockets of water, these, and the, the pumplings and the, and the, it's called bioshield or something like that.
Water shield.
Water shield. They're, they're broadleaf plants that sit on the surface, and they follow the rivers, and they also provide habitat for fish, so it's a balance.
So in closing, I mean, I have to steer about, if you guys want to, you know, come out and take a little cruiser around Wilson Pond or whatever, next week's supposed to probably be our Indian summer, so we're...
Careful now.
Be on the phone.
Careful.
Huh?
Careful.
I don't know, it's, it's hanging in there.
No, no, I'm just saying be careful.
So.
Word selection can be very important to some...
Oh, it'll cold me summer.
Cold me summer, that's right.
Mark's also going to take his boat out of the water recently, so if you want to take a nap.
Thanks for the, for the weekend. Just coordinated with Mike, I'll be right.
I'll bring a paddleboard for Bill.
I'm going to show you my course during.
Well, I know we had this character paddleboard...
Should be out tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, be on, and when I take your boat out, you're limited to five.
The boat would be preferable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. What happened all my way into my rock?
You must have gained some, didn't you? Did you lose?
Everybody had this before.
Ten to the nether.
I don't know, but my neighbor lost most of his. But I don't know if it's on the other map or what.
He still owns the same amount. We can look at it. Yeah, give me a, give me the address after, we can take a look at it.
Tell everybody just to blame Mike.
There you go. Pick a Mike, any Mike.
Can we discuss, or do you want a motion? I'll make the motion, Beverly, with regard to the adoption of the updated tax maps and the property, property map.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, we'll discuss it.
Well, I suspect there'll probably be just like the, the tax numbers, there'll probably be a, a couple of weeks where there'll be entertaining opportunities.
a couple of weeks where there'll be entertaining opportunities to discuss.
Okay. Make your motion.
Yep.
Second.
Yeah.
For the discussion. Right now goes in favor.
Just to take the opportunity to recognize the point that you're making, that those discussions have already started and Mike and the team have done a great job handling those as they come in. In addition to all the work over the last three years, Jenna, Mike, Matthew, Sarah, Julius, Christine, all spent a lot of time to make this project a success. And I think ninety-eight percent of the properties are, you know, going to change very little if at all, not have any issues. Some people are going to be happy that they gained some acreage, at least for taxation purposes, maybe for taxation purposes they won't be happy, but so I just wanted to recognize all that hard work because it was a lot of time.
And you anticipated going live by year end?
The GIS, yes. Yeah, I put year end, I mean, they're thinking next month, but that might be just internal initially. I don't know when the public site would go live, that might be a little bit later, but.
Will we feature it on the cover page?
Good idea.
Chesterfield does a good job of that, actually. You see that one?
Their GIS portal?
Very prominent.
Finally catching up to Chesterfield?
For light years. Tom always thought if we go for a asset management grant for the North Swansea Sewer and even stormwater and the precinct goes for the water, maybe we could have CAI do a GIS.
Layer.
Yeah, so the sewer and wastewater, and yeah, stormwater and wastewater are, that's
what's underway now, so the north.
North too, or just west?
Yeah, north too, in the past third. So we're going to have those modules, they have to get out of the water pretty soon,
All right. Any questions about the July expenditure revenue report?
Seems like a round track. I think we're going to find fifty thousand.
I didn't see it, no.
Is August going to show a lot of money out for the roads and?
I have to check with, I think, yes, some was July, some was August. I don't know if she, because I didn't see it in there. I think, I know she was posting it towards like an emergency management line, but I would think it shouldn't show up there, so I'll check on that, but I can get a breakdown otherwise if not.
All right, Christian Hill Bridge Engineering Agreement.
Yes, we have an updated agreement with Royal Tanner. The good news is the federal government through the state is funding the full share of construction. The bad news is that higher level of, I'll say requirements, requires a little more engineering and it's been a few years that the process has been going on. So basically our total, our total cost towards the project is going to be twenty percent of the engineering phase, but that engineering phase is going to be a little more than it was previously. So looking for an increase, an additional ninety-three thousand, six fifty-two, of which the town share is just under nineteen thousand.
Goldenrod Bridge.
We're going to make that vote on that first, right?
I'll make that motion with regard to Michael's comments. Second.
Motion made in second. Hold it there.
Aye.
Aye. You were saying?
Yeah. Goldenrod Bridge.
It went there today. Exit lights for exit signs, lights. You happy?
Nothing sparking?
Yeah. It's awesome.
Get that in minutes, he said it's awesome. Continued mild safety improvements, but it was really kind of prompted, at least initially when one of the grounds was damaged, and just kind of another laundry list while we were going in there to take care of that, add a few other, some of the outlets and different things. So we're looking for four thousand dollars from the Goldenrod Grange Hall Capital Reserve Fund for that.
I'll make that motion Beverly. Second.
Motion made in second. Goes in favor. October meeting schedule?
I think the, every other week is going to be going bye bye, but with budget season, but I'm suggesting we not meet on the fourth and then we'll be getting into the heart of the budget appointments.
All right. An agreement? Okay.
Consensus?
Yeah, consensus. Fire station construction management for the summer.
So I'd asked Mike to join us for this discussion since, A, this was his field for many years, construction, and he's been helping on the selection process and then the discussions with DEW. So we received two timely submissions to the request for qualifications from DEW and Hunter Construction. We interviewed both of them. Either of them, I think, would do a great job building the project, but we just felt on pre-construction and kind of the building community support, the marketing phase, answering those questions at, you know, public hearings and different things, we just felt like DEW was a little bit stronger. And we think their experience on some small lower cost projects such as the West Milland Fire Station made them, made them the selections. So how the process works, we pick someone, then we do the negotiation. They provided their initial proposal like right before your last meeting and we wanted some time to digest that and discuss it, which we did. We had a meeting with them last week. So maybe pause and let Mike jump in.
Yeah, so we questioned the price of the whole thing, you know, it seemed awfully high, you know, as a percentage of the overall cost, we probably know so much, but it's still quite a bit high. So we went through the process with them and they knocked it down a little bit, which we appreciate. If they do their job right, we're trying to have every confidence they will, they should save that money. They should actually save us that many times over, that's the whole point of this. But if we're trying to get the billing for roughly the same cost as what the last time we put up the warrant, we're going to have to get, and they wouldn't confirm this number, but I firmly believe that they softly confirmed that we're going to have to get rid of thirty percent of that building. And we can't just get rid of thirty percent, we have to get thirty percent of everything equally. So if I had three toilets, it's only going to have two. Someone, so if we can't just take off the conference room and it paid, that's not going to be thirty percent. And then we're going to look at different materials and different building methods and the rest of it, but hopefully just smaller will help. You know, the question's going to be, I'm working with the fire department, what thirty percent goes? But if we want, if we want same price, we have to get different building. That's no great surprise to any adult, I don't think.
Sure isn't.
My God.
Poor guy.
But there are other places to save too, like the drive-throughs, bays and things like that, but.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't.
Maybe not, we have a mezzanine.
Yeah, we need, right, one hundred percent. I mean, I think, I think that's, I mean, I know you talk about specifics, so everything's in a good place. That's what we really got to go through is, you know, I kind of went through it already and I don't mind if Michael just goes, okay, this move is so reshuck this, the mezzanine, how mezzanine is twisting the left?
Put that mezzanine square footage if it's five percent or whatever, it's probably not saving five percent off.
Absolutely not, absolutely not. Whatever you cut is only, it best, it best, you know, saving half. We learned that before, it's a rule in construction when you're doing the annual assessments. Again, I won't be surprised if anybody, we dealt with that in this actual project in the world once, we cut it in half, but we didn't, we didn't save fifty percent. We saved about twenty-five and that's kind of how it works unfortunately, because there's some basic costs, there's just a basic cost. But I have every confidence that we can work with them. The thing I like best about the conversation, unlike a lot of the people I have to deal with every day, is we can have very real earnest conversations that may even get a little bit heated, but you can at least talk about the real lessons of both of it. That's really important in case like this, you've got to be able, you've got to be able to speak that way to each other and get things done. You can't get people feelings and assess stuff. We're trying to build a building, we're trying to build it for X number of dollars, which is great. It's good, it's good to be with the people who've been there and you have to be able to do that. That's a lot of money, I know. But it's going to yield us the best possible result, we'll have a confident and have people to help justify it and rationalize it.
All right, I'll make the motion Beverly to authorize the expenditure up to twenty-one thousand five hundred from the investment in Hampshire per unit grant. And authorize, authorize the town administrator to sign the contract documents.
Motion made in second. Goes in there.
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's appreciated.
Good job, Michael.
Yeah, I appreciate the kind of work on the GIS from Michael. It really was great. Very cool project so far so good.
Two thousand twenty-three assessment?
So that's the Tenth Prairie Lane discussion that Mr. Franks came in on August thirtieth with Dave. That's the discussion about the taxes while that property was under construction. So I know you wanted to table that last week, you had some, some time to think about it. I do think we should get back to Mr. Franks one way or the other, even if it's to say, we're not going to do this option, but we could go through the normal abating process. But this, this is going to get to a point where it's, A, holding things up for us and B, I think we should, I think we should provide a little answer.
I think over the lifetime of the project, we're going to lose so much money, it's not even funny, so I would say no. Keep the assessment at what it is. We don't debate any of it.
So therefore regardless of what, I think, the plan should, it's going to make a difference.
Well, this low income tax credit thing that the state wrote it on, it's a great idea, except unfortunately the Mananak Regional School District in down in Swansea have to pay for it.
So you deny it?
Yeah. We're leaving, I would, yeah, I would, yeah, I guess deny this, this request, but I would leave it in Dave's hands because I know he had provided some separate data that he wanted Dave to review and I had Dave hold off on that because I want, you know, if you're going to make this, this adjustment, the value and the percentage done, all that was kind of irrelevant, so I would ask that you leave that open for Dave to continue to.
Right, you know, if it's under construction, the value might be different. I don't know if Dave factored that in.
Yeah, he did, but, you know, whether it was fifty percent, forty percent, sixty percent, so understood.
All right. Well, which is true.
Want your water, please, Mr. Chen.
I was refused from that.
You did refuse yourself. So the consensus of the two other board is to deny the request. Is that correct?
That's what I understand.
Thank you.
So I do want to ask just a question, just for clarification, not involving the vote or anything. So this leaves the door open for Dave?
That's why I asked for, yes, was for Dave to still have the opportunity.
Prior to going to the appeals board, did he have an opportunity to intervene?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, which is true.
As you know, the city and their engineers were here at your last meeting, they provided a few different options. Subsequently, we did get confirmation from NHDOT that Swansea would be responsible for our twenty percent of the improvements within Swansea. So if you get to higher cost options, that's starting to get to be a pretty significant cost for us, so I, for me, and I don't know what the board's thoughts are, but I think the roundabout had probably limited benefits anyway, that cost, I think they're, they're weighed by the cost. So the staff was supportive, so I met with the department heads and they were supportive of trying to find, they liked the idea of having the short shared turning lane. So they liked the idea of trying to have a three, three lane option. They said it's two lane, it's really like three in a lot of it right now, so I think they could do that for less than, they gave a two million estimate, which is like probably adding out. So I guess I would be looking for it, I would sit and go, that's, that'd be great also, but, you know, that we move forward with no roundabout and a, with sidewalks and ideally three lanes, we can incorporate it more or less within the existing footprint. If it starts to get to that two million dollar range, we might want to, you know, see how valuable we think that shared turning lane is. Those were my thoughts, our thoughts.
Very popular, some did that pretty well too.
Yeah.
What's there works.
Yeah.
And it will provide a break for all those break turn people coming out of the Senate terrace and everything else. They might not have otherwise.
Thank you. So we're in agreement with that?
Which for me.
Do you want the motion?
Sure.
I'll make that motion Beverly.
Second.
Motion made in second. Goes in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Swansea Factory Road.
We also met, the department heads and discussed that letter that appeared at the last meeting from a consultant with the state about some different alternatives they're looking at for the Swansea Factory Road, Route 101 intersection. We didn't necessarily have one that we liked the best, but we thought they all provide different options that could improve the sightlines, so basically I'd like to, like to see more about what they, what they develop, but our kind of general consensus was we liked their effort to try to improve it, we didn't necessarily have strong feelings about which improvement.
It's a tough change to make.
Any of them. Either adding another bridge or taking out a bunch of properties, so.
Or.
Or, oh yeah, or you're going, they're extending thirty-two.
Extend thirty-two to off the collab like they were going.
Yeah.
Swansea Factory Road, one way.
You know how popular one way is.
Make it go down with a roundabout off the collab.
What's that? E.
So as we've discussed last, you know, frequently, legislation does not currently allow cameras monitoring covered bridges and Representative Faulkner, I had a chance social encounter with him at a rail trail meeting and he said, oh, it's the week we have to file legislation. I said, oh, boy, am I glad to see you. So he was able to file legislation, which we then shared with our other reps and Senator Fenton and the municipal association. So the legislation is in the pipeline, so we'll have our, our day in Concord for a hearing, fighting with the ACLU about privacy concerns probably. But we got the legislation filed, so we're following through in the process. Everyone, I'll let you know when the hearing is so we can rake up the suits and carpool and.
Did Jennifer jog in?
I haven't heard from her, but I had spoken to her, I think so I had too, so I believe she was going to be supportive as well. And kind of coincidentally, I think Chief Joe had heard from another chief in Lime, New Hampshire, where they had a really significant, like three quarters of a million dollars of damage, so I emailed that chief and said, hey, can we join you? Can you join our coalition? So I haven't heard back yet, but Chief Joe's going to reach out to him too, so.
Good.
He aren't working on it.
Straight up update?
So we had some exciting news in addition to the tax map update today. We closed, I don't know if we consider we closed, we almost closed, on one ten Pine Street. So we did a walk through, it's in about the condition we expected, but I need an additional one thousand, twenty-four, twenty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents for some closing costs, title insurance and things of that like that I had factored in previously. So I'd be looking for additional one thousand, you don't have this, Beverly?
Done?
No, just, just came up three o'clock tonight, so. Good timing, we had a meeting tonight. So one thousand, twenty-four.
One thousand?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
And twenty-nine cents.
Oh, twenty-one cents.
Nine.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-nine.
Oh, twenty-nine, oh, sorry. And this is for?
One ten Pine Street.
Yeah, what about it? Yeah, what about it?
For additional closing costs.
For?
Purchasing one-ten Pine Street.
Oh, for purchasing? One thousand, twenty-four, twenty-nine?
It was, it was closing costs that had been anticipated.
Oh, closing costs.
What could have been the purchase price?
Looking mistakes.
Do you take those out of lumber and cross them?
No.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead. Do we second that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have one brief thought bubble. Just wanna reopen and see if, if folks are stuck with us on this one.
Okay, I'm gonna step down a corner.
We'll wait for it.
Well, you can do the, do the.
Make your motions.
Motion.
We're gonna, oh, Slavik. All right. Make the motion, we go into non-public under A.
Dave, is it?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, you go into non-public under A.
Colby.
Aye.
Walker.
Karazinski.
Aye, thank you guys.